I want to not email you about that. I didn't know that.
Yeah, I'm still looking.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
We're ready to vote.
Great.
Can you hear me now? Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission meeting. We are commissioned appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community to hold public hearings and to make recommendations to the governing body on planning items. Please note that the governing body rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the planning commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the governing body. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the governing body next month. Agendas can be found on topeka.org. Some of tonight's cases involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedure will be as follows. First, the planning department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or the representative. Then we'll receive public testimony. Comments are limited to four minutes. For agenda items that do not involve public hearings, public comment is allowed provided the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks or has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Comments are limited to four minutes. Finally, at the end of regular business, the commission will entertain general comment regarding matters relating to the commission business provided the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks or has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Comments are limited to four minutes. Amanda, please take the roll.
Mr. Dean?
Here.
Ms. Nelson?
Here.
Ms. Heron?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Cow?
Here.
Mr. Nager?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Tobavin?
Here.
Ms. Hanen?
Here.
We have enough to proceed. We have forum.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of minutes from December 18, 2023. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Culp?
Thank you. I would move that the commission accept the minutes as submitted by staff.
Thank you. It's been... A second?
Second.
Move and second. Any comments on the motion? If not, would you please take the roll?
Ms. Hanen?
Aye.
Mr. Tobavin?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Minutes passed, nine zero.
Thank you. Next up is election of the 2024 Chair and Vice Chair.
Commissioners, it's that time of year to elect Chair and Vice Chair. So I think... Have we typically... I'm trying to refresh my memory. Have we typically moved the Vice Chair up? Or do we... Have we typically just opened it back up?
I think it's been typically opened back up.
Okay. So, Commissioners, we'll need motions to nominate someone or just nominate someone, and then we'll just do a voice vote to settle the matter. So just start nominating as you see fit, and we'll work it out.
Do we do Chair or Vice Chair first?
Let's do Chair first.
I would like to... I don't know if this is the right way to do it, but I would like to nominate Donna Pearson for Chair.
Okay.
A second denomination?
Okay. Any other nomination? If not, we will go for a vote... A voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Will Nager.
Any seconds for the nomination?
Yeah, I was just gonna send it.
Katie's faster than yours. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? If not, a voice vote. All in favor of Commissioner Nager being Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, before we get into... Move on to the... Before you do... Before you descend from the throne, I would want to... And I think I'm speaking for others as well. You've done a really good job, more than competent, and I appreciate the fairness and thoroughness of the job you've done.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I've had a really good time.
You're welcome. You'll have to do it again.
My term's actually up this year, so... Do we switch? Yep.
Shall we begin? The first action item tonight is case number C... Oh, sorry. Declaration of Conflict of Interest or Ex parte Communications by Members of the Commission. Does anyone have a declaration to make? All right, seeing none. The first case number tonight is CU 2316 by the City of Topeka Utilities Department. Staff, will you give your presentation?
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. This is a conditional use permit for a public utility structure for a sanitary sewer pump station type two. The applicant, which is in this case the City of Topeka, who's acquired an easement on a portion of a property which is owned by the Metropolitan Topeka Airport Authority, needs to rebuild and replace the existing sanitary sewer pump station out there. They have acquired... The City of Topeka Utilities Department has acquired a .22 acre easement. It is within the boundaries of Billard Airport at 3,500 Northeast Sardau Avenue. The pump station will remain under the ownership by the City of Topeka, and maintenance will be by the City of Topeka. The existing pump station that's on the site right now, located directly to the east of the property, which is up here, will be demolished when the new pump station is constructed. The existing pump station has outlived its life cycle, no longer satisfies the minimum standards. This new station will be contained in an 80-square-foot, eight-foot-by-tall, 10-foot... Eight-foot-by-10-foot-tall fiberglass structure building, dressed to the east of the existing pump station. The City of Topeka easement is entirely encompassed within the boundaries of Billard Airport. The guidelines for evaluation of CUPs, which are identified in 18215030, outline some... Provide the guidelines that CUPs should follow. In this case, the conditional use permit does adhere to those guidelines. Only about very little traffic will be generated through maintenance of the facility, which is about one vehicle per week. The building does match the existing buildings within the airport. This is necessary to support the operation of the municipal airport. The pump station must be reconstructed. The decibel level is minimal. Wall signage is minimal. It's designed to accommodate any other control measures if needed. The applicant did not hold a neighborhood information meeting due to the fact that it was within the boundaries of the airport. Typically, our legal department indicated we would only have to notify within... Around the boundary of the easement area in this case. So we waived the neighborhood information meeting and sent the notice to the Kansas Highway Patrol, the MTAA, and the Oakland NIA, and none of those representatives expressed any concerns. Staff, I reevaluated the proposal according to guidelines under the golden factors. It does meet those, and we are recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Are there any questions for staff by the Commissioners?
Thank you. And just one quick question. The CUP, it encompasses only the area of the easement itself?
Yes, that is correct. Just the area of the easement.
Just the .22?
That was allowed by our legal... Our city attorney.
Yes, just the .22 acres.
Yes, it's just the .22 acres.
Thank you.
And that is...
Yes.
I don't have any substantive concerns about this, but on page four, under lighting and sound, it says no sound greater than 50 decibels. On page seven, it says no sound greater than 55 decibels. Like I said, I don't think it's a big deal which it is, but I just want to make sure that we say the same one.
The height of... There's an antenna associated with the pump station, and that height is 50 feet, and the decibel level, which is noise-related, is 55 decibels. So if you go to the site plan, which is attached in your packet, there might have been a... It indicates the maximum height there is 50 feet. So those two might have been... You might be confusing those two.
All right. All right. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Yes. All right, is the applicant present?
Good evening, Commissioners, and congratulations on winning the election. Angela Sharp with Bartlett &amp; West, representing the city. I also have with me tonight Zach Stevie, who is the project engineer for the city, as well as Ethan Meyer, who was the design engineer with Bartlett &amp; West for the project, if you have any technical questions. Annie, as usual, did a great job of describing what the zoning issue is, and as she mentioned, this is required to provide wastewater service and reliability for this basin, and that's the purpose of the project. And we did notify the Highway Patrol and the MTAA and talked with them, and they obviously were both pretty excited, actually, about the project for the reliability of their wastewater service. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Just a quick question. The decibel level was mentioned before. Is there an existing decibel level that you're subject to?
At the airport or in general?
Well, associated with the sewer, the pump station.
No, there is not currently a limit on the decibels.
So this is new. I was just a little surprised to see it in the report. But if you're okay with it, that's great. But this is an airport. You would think that the decibel level of aircraft would be much higher than your pump station's going to be.
I would agree. And I think the reason it's in there is on previous pump stations where we've had conditional use permits that are in more residential settings. They have had that constraint on the conditional use permit, and so it was carried through to this one. So the city didn't have any issue with having that.
So you guys are okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience for public testimony? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion by Commissioners? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion with a second.
Madam Chair? Move approval subject to conditions.
A second.
All right, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, Amanda will take a vote.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tobavin?
Aye.
Ms. Hanen?
Aye.
Motion passes, nine zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is case number P2316, Southland subdivision number three. Can I have the staff please up? We gotta switch.
Good evening, Vice Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is P2316, Southland subdivision number three. This is a major plat. This first slide, the area in red, it does not encompass what is all on the east side. This plat is a follow-up of Southland subdivision number two, which was a plat as a minor plat previously. Getting a little bit farther into this. So in 2022, I believe it was December, we had a PUD case for this property. It was to rezone it to PUD with M1 uses. Part of the reason it was a PUD and not just zoned M1 was due to this being a low-income housing tax credit senior project, how the roads would be delivered back to the city at some point. So part of the condition of the PUD was going to require that the city approve for the streets to be taken over through a major plat process later on. And then during 2023, we took this as a minor plat. This is how this was originally broken down here. So you have three lots and two tracks for stormwater. This was approved as a minor plat. That was partially to help with the timing and the development of this project with the low-income housing tax credits. Here we have the preliminary plat for this property. Again, what you see in blue is the right-of-way that is being handed over to the city at this point in time. And we've talked with the engineers and everything. They are comfortable with this development. One thing I will point out is the full street does not... Is not being dedicated as right-of-way. There is a segment that will be continued as a private road. That is southeast Bryant Street, and that's kind of the part towards the north of that property. So that is not being handed over at this time. Additionally, there is a variance on the final plat as well. This is for utility easements, the eight-foot utility easement requirement. Those are not along the west side of Lot 1 Block B and the stormwater tract in Lot A. That is because the way the utilities will be laid out for this property, they're going to be in that right-of-way that was dedicated. And there's existing water lines and everything to the south that can serve the properties farther west, but everything for this project will be routed internally through the project or through the parcels. That is all I have. I would take questions at this time.
Are there any questions for staff?
Other question? So I'm just trying to understand the what-if game a little bit here. So you've got Track B, which is... It continues north as the road curves. So it looks like it would be a road, a street, but that's... The city's not taking that over. And so trying to understand how that happens in the future. So let's say they continue that street north at some point in the future. Is the city responsible for maintaining that? Or does the neighborhood... So Track B, that's that one on the northeast of the property, that is currently dedicated as a... Wrong page here. We've identified that as that was going to be a potential issue if the city... Or if they were to develop that site. So at this time, that lot has been identified for... It is not developable at this time. If that were to happen, they would need to come back and replat, potentially look at the PUD to allow that. Part of the reason this stubbed off is while working with traffic engineers as part of that PUD that required the city to accept the streets as designed, they wanted a... Some sort of turnaround that was greater than what was here. They were comfortable with that stubbing at the time. Fire was also comfortable because of the community building and the access on the left for emergency vehicle turning... Being able to turn around. So that lot is not developable, Track B. We would need to go through a full process if that were to happen and that road were extended. The developer does not own that land at this time, so that would be a different project completely.
Are there any other questions by Commissioners? Is there any applicant present tonight?
Good evening. I'm Joshua Blinsky with SBB Engineering. We prepared the plat, and I have Connor Menard here with itself Development Group. So we're just here to answer any questions you have. I think Bryson covered pretty much everything that needed to be covered. Any other questions?
Are there any questions for the applicant? You may be seated. You may be seated. Is there any public testimony from anyone in the audience? All right. I would like to close the public hearing now. Is there any discussion by the Commissioners about this case? I will entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any discussion on the emotion? No. All right, Amanda, will you take the vote?
Ms. Hanen?
Aye.
Mr. Tobavin?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Motion passes, nine zero.
Next item on the agenda is case number CU 241 by Don Philippi and Candy Bryant. And we'll do the switch for staff. Ready, we knew, I'm Mr. Sharp.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a conditional use permit application requested by Don Philippi and Candy Bryant. It's requesting a CUP for operation of a short-term residential rental type two at 116 Southwest to Drive, which is presently zoned, R2 single-family dwelling district. Staff is recommending approval subject to conditions listed in the staff report. Just to give a little bit of background on how this conditional use permit application got here, in our zoning code, we have specific use requirements for short-term rentals. If the property does not meet those specific use requirements, the applicant can apply for a conditional use permit. That's what happened in this case. The applicant could not meet the 500-foot buffer of another registered short-term rental type two within the area. How that worked, Mr. Philippi had an approved certificate to operate from April 2021 through April 2023. That certificate lapsed during that time. Another short-term rental came in and was granted a certificate to operate, that STR 2319 that's on Second Street. Mr. Philippi came to our office to reapply for the short-term rental, and we told him that that's how we got here to the conditional use permit application. So let's move on here. The neighborhood, it's in the... It's a zoned R2 single-family. It's surrounded by R2 single-family. It's in the greater Auburndale neighborhood. This subdivision, the Edgewood Park subdivision, is located inside that neighborhood. To the west, we have Edgewood Park. Same with the future land use map. This neighborhood is projected to remain residential. Mr. Philippi provided a statement of operations for the specific use requirements. They mirror our specific use requirements. For his specifically, there's going to be a two-bedroom occupancy for the house, a minimum two nights stay. Parking is provided towards the back of the alley, two off-street parking spaces plus a detached garage, which satisfies our specific use requirements. And lawn and maintenance upkeep will be provided by the applicant as well as paid for the trash service provided by Shawnee County. Just to get a little bit into the location and the history of 116 Southwest to Drive, again, it's located in the Edgewood Park subdivision. It's listed in both the National Register of Historic Places and also the Register of Historic Kansas Places. That was listed in 2020 under criteria and C for architecture. The Edgewood Park subdivision, it was the first speculative development by the Garland House Company. If you're not familiar with the Garland House Company, they produced plan books for people to purchase plans to construct houses. This subdivision was almost provided model homes for Garland House to create these plans with. 116 Southwest to Drive is one of these approved Garland House plans. It retains excellent integrity as a craftsman bungalow. The applicant... And this has all been driven by the applicant maintaining the property following the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, National Parks Service Standards. All that to say as well, if there's a major change of use to the property, if there's an addition, alteration, demolition to the property, that will require additional review from the Topeka Landmarks Commission as an additional historic review. Pictures of the front and the back. Pictures of the front and the back. These are some of the special use requirements. Ones that are there to maintain the appearance of single-family residents. The exterior of the dwelling and premises shall outwardly remain and appear to be a residential dwelling. That's what we're trying to go for. So yeah, it's, some of these specific use requirements are geared towards that. No major retail sales of anything that's not related to having transient guests be there. It can't be an advanced center. You can't, the applicant can't, you know, rent out the property for weddings or any type of events like that. And again, these special use requirements are there in place to maintain the appearance of the single-family residence. And the only one that cannot be followed is that 500-foot buffer. And again, that's why we're here. That's why the applicant is requesting this conditional use permit. So with that, staff recommends approval subject to the conditions, use and development of the site in accordance with the approved CUP and statement of operations. In the event of substantial changes in operations, the applicant will submit a revised statement of operations to the planning department. And the last, the CUP will last for two years. The property owner will need to make a written request six months prior to that two years to get that, to get the CUP renewed. And that will be under the discretion of, discretion of the planning director. So again, with that, staff's recommending approval of the CUP application. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Mr. Cow?
The only reason we're here on the CUP is the 500-foot distance limitation, which they can't meet. And the policy, the short-term rental ordinance does have clustering as a, or a concern about clustering is part of the ordinance. I don't necessarily share that concern, but for what that's worth. But the staff's position is because of the special circumstances here, meaning that there had been a short-term rental at that location without complaints from the neighbors, that we're not setting some, we're not kicking the door wide open to anybody else wanting to go within that 500-foot distance. This is a relatively unique or, or unique set of circumstances from the, from the staff's perspective.
Yes. And that, you are correct about the clustering, the anti-clustering that we're trying to accomplish with that. Five, the five, how we reached 500 feet, that's the average length of a, length of a residential block. Again, this, it, these are close to each other. They're not, they're on different streets. One's on the drive, the other's on Second Street.
Can you indicate where on Second Street it's at?
It's, that's.
Oh, I see.
The other administrative permit. The subject property is up on the drive.
Okay, thank you.
So yes, you are correct about.
And that's an additional factor that helps to distinguish this from something else that comes down the road.
Yes.
Six months from now. Thank you.
So really, if theirs hadn't lapsed, then that one would, the other one would have had to seek this approval, correct?
Yes.
So whenever the original one did lapse, so is that a situation where in the future, every time that someone sees a permit to use it as a short-term rental, that any other house in the neighborhood can be like watching for that date and try and swoop in? And then they can go back and forth? Or is it just, was there something about like, they didn't use it for a couple of months as a short-term rental? And because of that, they didn't file the paperwork?
There is a story. Well, the, the, the background behind it, the applicant can explain. But there was some miscommunication between planning staff and the applicant when it came to emailing the original certificate to operate back in 2021. So that, that's kind of where this started. There's a little bit of miscommunication, I would say. And that's how we got here.
And those things happen. I'm not super worried about that. So that wouldn't be every time that one of these rentals existed? That wouldn't necessarily, there wouldn't be that opening for them to be like switching back and forth which rental in the neighborhood was valid?
So Commissioner Nager, your concern is a concern shared by us as well. People can, we, we have a map. It's on our website. It shows all of the short-term rentals. You can look it up and see when they expire. Someone can get the jump on somebody. That's an imperfect feature of our short-term rental regulations. And that's inherent anytime you have like a separation requirement like this. I don't know if it's inherent, but it's, it's a, that's why it's like that. And so, yeah, we're not really sure how to deal with that, honestly. Except just make sure people are aware of it. And, you know, one thing we don't do currently is we don't notify people when they're due for a renewal. But that is something we can do. But that doesn't address the main concern you shared in that someone can go in for someone. They, they would have to pay the application fee. It's a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five dollar application fee.
Thank you.
Is this one only being considered because it was previously allowed? So like if somebody else came in and said they got a conditional use permit, now we'd like one too, would that not make it to us?
We would handle it on a case-by-case basis, yes, Commissioner. Hey, Mike, you can go ahead.
It still has to be, it still has to meet the test of all the factors. So even if there wasn't that history, I think, you know, there's more to this than that. I think the fact that it's not on the same block. But the other part of this is they do, I guess the history is important in, in that they've done a good job of maintaining the property. We haven't received complaints. The property looks great, you know, what they've done with the exterior of the building. But each one will have to stand on its own merits.
Yes.
You may not know the answer to this question, but do you know how far apart these two properties actually are?
Approximately 260 feet.
So about half?
About half, yeah.
A little over half.
Yeah.
But they literally face different ways, going in different directions, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have questions for staff? Is the applicant present tonight?
Hello, I'm Don Philippi. Do I just start speaking or do I have to do anything? Okay. Well, I can answer those questions about why we didn't know. Unfortunately, the city had used the zip code of 66205 for our address, which comes out Mission, Kansas. Where's it in 66502? So this is a case of somebody had dyslexia. And we ended up, all the notifications and stuff, we didn't get. In fact, we were the original three, or close to the original three, short-term rentals in the city. We went through a zoning thing and then the city decided to change that and go ahead and decide that we needed a short-term rental ordinance. And we, I will tell you, on the, the first year when we were trying to get the application, apparently they were still working on certificates because I tried to call in November and December of that year to find out when we're getting our certificate because we had paid for three of them. In fact, on your map, there, there across the park was Edgewood, which we actually had a short-term rental over there as well. It's the, if you can, well, it's, if you, Second and Edgewood, it's a second house from the bottom is where we used to have a short-term rental there as well. But that one, we decided to sell. So we actually reduced occupancy in the area, if nothing else. So how we got here as well? We used to, interestingly enough, there is a little bit of a coincidence here. You can call it something different. I'mma call it a very interesting coincidence. The house that is there was, was our manager during the time when our permit lapsed. Interesting. And when this all happened, we did not know. When we found out, and you have a great, and I've mentioned this to the staff and everything, your enforcement officer went one step beyond. And she actually decided, rather than try the mail, which didn't seem to work because it was going to Mission, Kansas, said Manhattan, she actually called my wife Candy and left a voicemail. When she left the voicemail, I showed up at the city that same day. Okay? Because we did not know. We did not know if their certificates were being sent out. We, I tried calling a couple of times, didn't seem to happen. So that's where we were. That's how this happened. I doubt this will happen ever again. This is a very strange. And as far as our, I guess our competitor on Second, yes. There's something about, I don't know, conflict of interest or whatever, when he was our manager, swooping in on our short-term rental permit. Kind of an interesting side note there. Anyway, let's see. We kept the house wonderful. I mean, I think we did a pretty good job. And that's Candy's doing that she makes it look wonderful. And we are so thrilled that the staff has recommended approval on this. Because I really doubt you're going to come across a similar situation where somebody flips the zip code and you have this kind of a weird diametric thing where the owner's not being notified of anything. Because we did not know. So I know ignorance of the law is no excuse, but we tried. Anything for, any questions for me?
All right. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have more curiosity than anything. Where do most of your clients come from? Are they out of town or are they in town?
Actually, both. We have some there going like to stay around for loved ones at the hospitals because they're not too far from there. We have some that are passing through. We've all, oh, that's another thing I should have mentioned when we're going down this path. Some are passing through. We do have a two-night stay, so we don't get the one-off. Because with a hot tub, that's kind of, we found out that doesn't work. No, because then they're using it for their, they say they're not doing a party, but you know, they do a party. So we don't, we do two, two nights. We also have above and beyond the ordinances that you require, we also have quiet time from 10 to seven. They have to maintain that. And we can kick them out if they do more than that. We also have a, we do allow pets, but they cannot leave the property with the dog in the backyard. They have to take the dog with them or have them in a kennel. So there's no way that the dog can be just barking because the dog doesn't know where he's at. And I can imagine, that's kind of why we were doing that. So we're trying to be really good stewards in the neighborhood. That's why there hasn't been any negative things about us. Because we like fading into the woodwork with a really cool house.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. It's a beautiful home. I appreciate you taking the effort and time to, to do that. Pretty property, so.
Oh, thank you. It was one of the model Garland houses, actually. Well, the smaller ones, but one of the models, which kind of explains why we have a staircase going up to the attic. And there's no, you can put on the, and the idea was to show them a house and show them, okay, here will be a staircase. And if you wanted, we can put a, a room up on the second floor. But ours doesn't have one. And no, do we, we're not contemplating it either.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? Please state your name and you're limited to four minutes.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Nancy Buckingham Harms. And I'm arrested in Topeka and have been for a long time. I've known Candy for, I think, almost 18 years now. Met her at a fundraiser for Midland Care and have continued our friendship and, and almost a sisterhood. But I have to tell you that this house was originally bought by Candy as her personal residence. And the only reason that they turned it into a short-term residency is she made the mistake of marrying a professor at K-State. And I don't know, Don's got this silly attitude that it'd be nice if his wife lived in Manhattan. So rather than lose that property, they have turned it into a real gem in Topeka. It is quite the gem in the, in that particular area. And there are a lot of people that, as they travel, want to see pieces of architecture that have been restored. The fact that it's on both registries is incredible. And I hope you'll take advantage sometime and take a look-see because it's a beautiful piece of property owned by two incredible people with Topeka's best at their heart. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do any questions?
Can you tell I have a test to pass?
Are there any questions for the, for the public?
Okay, then, thank you.
Seena? All right. I move to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion by the commissioners?
Thank you, Madam Chair. William, on the third condition, it's a minor point, but I've seen a problem with this before. On the third condition that the staff recommends, if you go to that and look at the third line, and this talks about the applicant coming back and seeking a renewal. It says, within six months from the date of the expiration. I think it would be more precise if we said from six months, within six months prior to the date of expiration.
Commissioner Cow? I was pretty involved with writing that condition. So I can tell you that what was intended was to give them some flexibility that.
So it's six months either side?
Yeah, that was the intent. If you prefer that it be six months prior to, or?
Well, I, you know, this is the vagueness, is the, is the concern. So if it's intended, if the staff's recommendation is you have a full year, six months before, six months after the expiration to make, to seek the renewal, I think you should say that for, that in six months prior to or following the expiration. So there's no, so it doesn't come back and, and bite somebody.
So we could easily add that clarification to this if you prefer.
So Madam Chair, I, I support, I will support approval of the, but is there consensus that we could make that change to the, to the condition?
Yes. Does anyone have any discussion about making that change?
I would agree with that.
Anyone else have opinion?
Thank you, Mike.
So do I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Based on the findings and analysis of the staff report, I move to recommend a governing body approval of the conditional use report CU two four dash zero one, subject to the following three conditions, as amended by Commissioner Cow.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seena, Amanda, can you take a vote, please?
Mr. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Herron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Tabobin?
Aye.
Ms. Hanen?
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero.
The next item on the agenda, is there any other public comments that was received today? Is there any communications to the commission?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce a, maybe not a familiar face. Matt Mullen is from our city, city legal department. He's Deputy City Attorney. For the time being, he's had the good fortune of being assigned at the planning commission. For the time being, he's had the good fortune of being assigned at the planning commission and possibly the, the board of zoning appeals. So I'd just like to welcome Matt.
Hi, welcome.
Is there any other discuss?
I've got something. So I don't, I don't think we're going to have a meeting in March, so I think we're going to go ahead and cancel that meeting and then, but definitely coming back in April with, with some stuff for you to do.
Stuff? Okay. Does anyone want to make, comment on this? Where this paper?
Now, I'll, before I do that, Madam Chair, could I ask Dan about the, get an update on the ADU?
Yes.
If we're not going to meet until April?
Yeah, so we're going to have some public meetings in March, so we're scheduled to go to the CAC, the Citizen Advisory Council, first week of March, I believe. Then we're also going to talk to the Tennessee Town neighborhood and also the College Hill neighborhood and just hoping to get a variety of opinions out of that process. And after that, our plan would be then to have at least one, maybe two, public hearings at the planning commission where we would notify people and see if anybody wants to come and talk about accessory dwelling units.
Can the commissioners, if they have the availability, go to the other meetings, Tennessee Town, College Hill?
Sure.
Will that information be sent out to them?
We can do that, yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the, this publication that got sent out, you, there's an awful lot of information out there available, you know, through the world wide web on, on what cities have done around the country, really very aggressively or more passively to try to fund infrastructure, undertake affordable housing programs and so on. This is a document from the, that I ran across, and it's from the Lincoln Institute, which is a really, I mean, there's a lot of stuff, if you go to their website, there's a great deal of material that's just available there to take a look at. And I was struck by this one. It's kind of a thought piece for, you know, what a, again, what a lot of cities have been doing to fund their infrastructure, to undertake, again, affordable housing programs or other, other programs. And I, before you say anything, I recognize that there's a lot of difference between cities where folks are rushing to and will do anything to develop land and invest in those, and communities like Topeka where we're out trying to, trying to bring development in. So I, I know the techniques that are in here, which at first blush, look like they would be discouraging of development, are not going to fly here. Okay, that's, I understand that. But there are other techniques that are in here that are more, instead of a stick, it's a carrot approach, you know, incentives to, for developers. And if you look at, I guess if I was to ask you to look at anything that's in here, you could look at chapter four, where they have what they call incentive zoning, you know, transfer development rights. If I want, we could have regulations, the city could have regulations that would provide a density bonus, for example, for housing. You could exceed a standard of so many dwelling units per acre, you could bump that number up by 10%, 20%, whatever, upon the developer's commitment to construct affordable housing as part of that project. You know, it's, it's an add-on, it's a bonus if they choose to do it. It's not a mandate. But, you know, it's something that, that cities have done successfully, and we're wrestling with the affordable housing issue here in this community and have been for years. So again, it's just kind of a thought piece, and that's just one example of, of some of the techniques that are in here. But I know we're not building some, if you've looked at it at all, you see, talk about transit stations, subway stations and so forth, and, and the increase in property values that arise from that public investment to put in a subway station. We're not building subway stations in Topeka. I appreciate that. But there are other less aggressive, more incentive-oriented techniques that have been used successfully around the country, and I just thought the commission might like to see that and maybe we can have a discussion about it at some point.
Yeah, I was going to say, Dan and Rihanna, is there, if there are other commissioners interested in this topic, how can they get together to discuss this?
Good question. You could, you know, I guess, similarly to, you know, we have a worker for the accessory dwelling units. If you wanted to put a worker together, there's interest in putting a worker together that could meet sort of not as part of your normal process and just talk about some things and see what might come of it. I think possibly
Yeah, I think it would just be important that we identify maybe a select few that want to work together to lead that. That way we have a point, a point of action to go through. But yeah, we can definitely do that.
Is there anyone interested on the commission who, in this topic? I see at least four, at least four.
Four is a good number.
Four is a good number, okay. At least four, all right.
Madam Chair, I
That's Commissioner Nelson, Commissioner Herron, Commissioner Cal, and Commissioner Nager. Just a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, we don't do this very often, but, but the planning commission can initiate text amendments to the zoning regulations, and that's what we've talked about with the ADU. You know, that that's, that's coming from us and it, we don't have final say by any means, but, but we can put proposals forward for public hearing consideration, and then if it passes muster here, then it goes to the governing body.
So as the four of you meet, maybe that can be part of your discussions? And who, what staff person would be the person to initiate this starting?
Yeah, I think we can, as far as initiating it, we'll, we'll reach out with some times that work and try to collaborate calendars and get that, that hard piece, sometimes challenging out of the way first, and then we'll look internally to see. But I think at the beginning, it would be good that Dan and I be present for some of the initial meetings and kind of go from there.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get some dates.
Especially since we don't have a meeting next month, maybe within the next week or so, they could hear from me?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Is there any other
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion tonight? Do we motion this, well? Okay, we're done. Thank you, everybody.